Calling me through order of May 8, 2013, first item on the agenda is... Pledge of Allegiance, please. This reading is televised, I believe, and it is recorded.
I'd like to make a motion to add an item to the agenda.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to add that we reorganize the committee.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Is there any discussion? And, Don Myers, in favor, or, Philson?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're going to add to the agenda reorganization. Within that agenda, does anyone have any motions to that effect?
Is there any nominations?
Yes. Nomination's for, I guess we'll start with Chair, and then go down the list.
If you nominate Scott to be Chairman.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Any discussion? We'll have a roll call, Philson.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks. Are there any other further motions? Or, we have three officers, we have Vice Chair and Secretary.
I move that Dave Homefield is Vice Chair, Mashpee School Committee.
Second, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Philson, roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye. David, congratulations, David.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to, for Joan Oliver as Secretary.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion? And, Philson, roll call.
Aye.
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 Any others? I believe that sets it up, and we'll be ready to go now. I wanted to start by thanking Jose Franco for five and a half plus years, almost six years, of service to this town, and to this committee, and to the school district. I'm greatly appreciated, and I think he's served with his Mexican people, and I'm sure that people will have learned a great deal through Jose, and Jose has learned a great deal through the members he has served with. And we also would like to thank and congratulate Don Myers for joining the, winning the election and joining the committee tonight. Next on the agenda would be presentation by the Gay Street Alliance, nondiscrimination on the basis of gender identity. And do we have those persons in a row? Can you please approach the microphone and address the committee? Let's go ahead and identify yourselves before you speak, so that the committee knows who are listening to, and the floor's yours. This should be on, if you slide it up.
So, my name's Carolyn Gannon, and I'm a student here at Mashpee High School.
My name's Jessie Mederos. And we're both members of, like you said, the Gay Street Alliance. I'd like to talk a little bit about transgender rights.
Can you speak to the microphone closer, please?
Transgender rights and the law that was just passed. So, the question is what transgender actually is, and the term transgender refers to a person who may not identify with the sex that they had at birth. And this diagram right here is called the gendered person. And this basically says that the sexual identity of a person is completely different from the sexual orientation of a person. For example, if a man identifies as a woman, they don't necessarily have to, like men. Transgender non-d documentation policy was passed on July 1st, 2012, signed by default to Bill Patrick. And according to the guidelines, schools have to treat students male or female on the basis of which sex they identify with, and not necessarily their physical or biological makeup. Okay, so names and pronouns, this is kind of a big one. If an individual desires to be called a certain pronoun, they cannot be denied that pronoun. For example, if a person has the original name of Audrey, but they want to be called Jeff, a teacher or faculty member cannot deny this person that rank. Something that may be questioned is if there's medical documentation that needs to be given in order to change the name or the pronoun, and that's not true. No medical documentation is required in order for a student to be referred to as a he or she. So bathroom policy, this is also something that a lot of people question. If a transgender student, if a transgender student wants to enter the bathroom that they identify with, that is perfectly fine, and they have the complete right to do so. But if the person's uncomfortable doing so, they have access to the UNICEF's bathroom or the nurse's bathroom. The locker room policy is about the same as the bathroom policy. A transgender student who refers to themselves as, or identifies as a certain gender has the right to enter the locker room given to that gender. And the sports team policy. If a transgender person wants to join a team that may not identify with their gender, like for example, if a male who identifies as a female wants to join a football team, they're perfectly allowed to do so. Bowling must be taken seriously, and is definitely expanded in this law. Research shows that transgender students, or gender non-conforming students, suffer higher rates of verbal harassment or physical harassment. The public school admission policy, this is already been a policy that has been brought to the schools, but the one thing that was added to it was gender identity. A person cannot be denied from a public school just because they don't have a different sex. If there are any further questions on this matter, the Mashpee High School Gay Street Alliance meets every Wednesday from 2:00 to 2:30, and we're more than happy to clarify any questions. Or right now, if you have any questions. Yeah, that too. Oh, and a good example of transgender people are Chad Bonet, who shares, went from female to male. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Nicole DePurdom, and I'm the advisor for the Gay Street Alliance, and we recently went to a workshop on this and had the opportunity to learn about this new law. And a student had made this PowerPoint that is not currently here tonight, but wanted to share it with the school committee and with administrators to make everyone aware of this new law. And so I thank you for listening to the presentation and the PowerPoint.
We appreciate it, thank you.
May I make a comment?
Sure, Philson.
I was also at that workshop, was the place I went to it, and I sat through it. I did bring up something that we might have some sort of a conflict between interference with education and free speech, because I wonder where is the border where somebody could say something to the effect that, "I don't understand what you're doing," or,[652.04][652.04]"I don't approve of what you're doing." It could get into any number of things. And then a student feeling the discomfort of that negative or perceived negative opinion can come back and say, "You're interfering with my education." I'd like to have sort of a definition of where speech is free, or is the silent majority going to become silenced to majority, just because they're afraid of saying anything, because it can be interpreted in a way that would be negative to the point of interference. When is speech interference? That is something that maybe the Gay Street Alliance could take up, because I know at the workshop, I brought it up, and they said, "As long as you don't interfere, you have the right to speak." But that point is no longer there now.
Something we'll have to, we can look at further with the Gay Street Alliance. I don't have an answer right now.
Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is co-op gymnastics and slash family ID, and we have Athletic Director Matt Berry to address the committee.
Good evening. Matt Berry, Mashpee High School, Mashpee Middle School Athletic Director. And the two topics that I appreciate your time tonight. The first one is the possible addition of a co-op gymnastics team with Falmouth High School, starting probably in this winter. I gave you a couple handouts that kind of explain what that entails. I was approached, the history of this is I was approached by Falmouth Athletic Director Kathleen Burke on the subject in September. She wanted to do it for this year, for the winter of 2013. I thought that was, or 2012, I thought that was kind of quick. I wanted to take a look at all the aspects of what this entailed. After meeting with her several times, and meeting with the parents that are involved, and students that were possibly involved in this, and taking a look at the numbers of kids all the way down to, I got, actually, we have a handout all the way down to fourth grade, just to make sure that there's kids that would come up, and this would be a sustainable program. I thought it was worth going to J-Day and to AM Ratchon, and coming to you, and taking a look at, you know, possible approval for this. Our policy at Mashpee High School is any of these new programs, athletic programs, would have to be self-funded for three years. The parents are well aware of this from both schools. They would have to pick up the tab for the first three years, then final approval would come from the school committee in three years to fund either a portion of that program or the entire program. They're on it. So, what I've kind of given you is just a little synopsis of what this entails. I think, I personally like the fact that the reasons that I think are good for this is the high level of interest in our school and Falmouth. I think when you combine those numbers, you have solid numbers going forward. Traditionally, our winter tends to be the worst in terms of participation rate. This would help our participation rate. And you have parents who are fairly highly vested in this. They have not only put a lot of time commitment in their kids growing up in gymnastics, but they also are financially rolling the back their kids moving forward. I think, you know, as you saw, the host school would be Falmouth. It would be a co-op. There's things that go along with that. As you can see, eligibility requirements would still be our school. They have to meet our eligibility requirements to be eligible. They take care of a lot of things in gymnastics on their own, so their uniforms are taken care of by the kids, uniforms taken care of by the kids. I also gave you a kind of a summary of a current co-op, and our league, Orwell and Cohasset have a current co-op. You can see that what their expense report looks like. We typed out an expense report, potential expense report for us. There's two things that should be known in that expense report. The first one is, we rent a van, and that van could be used in lieu of using buses, which would be free to us. So, our transportation number, why, it looks at 2,400 right now. Assuming that we could use our van, and there's no conflicts with freshman basketball, which we currently use that van for, we could save a lot of money there. We're trying to obviously keep the number as low as possible, even though we're not paid for it the first three years. And then all the other things are there. The coaching stipend would fall under the host school's coaching stipend. So, it would be anywhere based on experience and based on numbers, anywhere from 4,100 to 5,300, that coach would be hired through, even though parents pay for the first three years from our end, we would have to hire the coach, because in essence, that's the way that we would have to have on any coach that works with our kids. And they would have to meet certain criterias as well, local, state, and even USA gymnastics criteria for liability purposes. The facility for gymnastics would be locally at Mashpee Footlops. Many of these kids already go there, so they already have familiarity with this. The gym would have to be certified by the MIA, it's already competition certified. I think one of the big points here is all the liability falls on them. We could never afford to take this in-house and ever have them meet here because of liability issues with facilities and that sort of thing. Their liability waiver would cover us for all of that as well. We're looking at a date possibly with Falmouth approval, with their superintendent, principal already approved, with approval of this winter, so winter 2013. And then we would have a schedule, we would jump right into a league, the Cranberry League, which encompasses a lot of local teams, NOS and Marshall. Some of the teams that are already in our league, as you can see there, Plymouth, Northern are in our league, but Cohasset, Orwell, Carver is in our league. So, the transition there would be fairly easy as well. It wouldn't be a tough transition, moving right into that league and getting started. Falmouth's end right now, they are looking at their parents picking up at least one year, and then they're looking at staggering it by percentages of what their parents pay. Talking to the parents that are involved, that they have no issue raising the money. These are parents who travel to all ends of Massachusetts and New England for meets already. They've done this probably for six or seven years, eight years, so this is something they're used to as well. And I don't have any questions at all.
I'm sorry, David, go ahead.
I was wondering if you have a coach in mind for this?
We don't. We have to go through all the interview process that we would use for any coach. So, we'd have to post internally first, both at Falmouth High School and Mashpee High School, to see if anybody would apply internally. After that, we would post with the MIA, post through the Boston Globe, Cape Cod Times, and it might be like any other interview process, both athletic directors involved. We'd probably have a committee of parents, possibly student athletes as well.
What happens to the question at school and middle school? Would they become involved in this program?
Because our eighth graders, we have a waiver, a blanket waiver for our eighth graders to participate in the lowest level offered for high school athletics. Eighth graders could participate, and it's actually a good point, because you turn to gymnastics, you have younger kids that tend to participate at a high level. And that, we would have, eighth graders would be eligible for us. They would be eligible to participate. And some of them are actually high level, they do everything by level, so those kids who are eighth grade right now are level seven, level H, so they could definitely compete.
You outlined on here thirteen between the two schools, how many from Mashpee tenetively?
Tenetively, what we've seen, we had a sort of a sign up, we have at least seven kids interested in Mashpee. I put you above, do I think every kid's going to participate? No, I mean, they have kids, my feeling is, if there's four kids in a grade that are gymnasts, I'm thinking fifty, I'm hoping for fifty percent, because kids are involved in other, whether it's other sports activities or work. So, I'm thinking, Kathleen Burke and I talked, and twelve would be a number that we're not going way over, and we certainly feel that's a solid number between the two schools.
Matt, do you have a deadline on, would you be approved for school committee?
There's no hard and fast deadline. We would like to get approved, most co-ops are approved by the MIA before the end of June, before their session's out. So, we would hope to have that approved within the next month.
Would, the committee could take it for a first read, and then would it be too late to have a decision early in June?
I could possibly get back to you on that, just because I'm not sure when they break for their co-ops. I know that it is early June that they approve all co-ops. Kathleen Burke's on District C, which is heavy to that, so she might be able to get an extension on that as well.
You know, unless the committee's tapping the door right ahead, or the committee wants to go.
I don't have any objections with this.
Is there material cost to students, anything that proves, I think that Don could put it to a vote?
There's only one coach, is that correct?
We only plan on hiring one coach.
And what's the average, what is, for example, what is the head basketball coach or head football coach's stipend at?
They all vary in terms of anticipated numbers, hours of work. It would fall under the Falmouth guideline, because it would be the host school. She has down here 4,100 to 5,300. And when we break down total expenses, and obviously they're paying for everything from our end for three years, down the road, my proposal is due in per pupil, with the assumption that we're a smaller school in terms of population. So, if we have, let's say, the whole thing costs nine, $10,000, to me, if we only have four kids participating, we pay forty percent, if there's ten kids total, which makes sense to me, which is the same way we do with our co-op right now in ice hockey with Upper Cape Cod Tech. So, it would be very similar to that.
There's no, it's my case, no GRCs in gymnastics, right?
There's no what?
GRCs.
No, we wouldn't receive any GRCs now.
That's unfortunate. You might go to that, though, you never know, right?
But actually, what schools do is, other schools in particular, you know, the schools in our league, is they literally put a hat, people will put a ton of money in a hat. It's not, you could technically charge, they don't charge, but you have their donations at the door, and there are schools that make hundreds and even thousands of dollars in donations when people come in for meets, so it's not unheard of to fund your program that way.
We can...
The idea of they mainly through boosters, though.
We can hear, see any motions?
I just have one question. Do the students get credit for this, for participating in courses strictly or strictly in?
Strictly MIA support.
One last question. Is Mashpee handling administration from the Mashpee kids that will be participating in this program, so handling all the funding payments, et cetera?
Absolutely. We would, we'd certainly oversee that, you know, we would pay for our share down the road. The idea is that the parents would be a unified group, and eventually go through boosters, and it wouldn't be Falmouth set of parents and Mashpee set of parents. Parents would wholly pay for the program for the first three years. Down the road, what would happen is, we would get a bill from Falmouth High School for our portion, and then we would pay them, they would send everything, we would pay them.
Let me ask you a question. During the first three years, are the parents paying Falmouth directly for their kids participating, so there's no administrative work by Mashpee?
Pretty much so. Which isn't a bad thing on our end.
I have a motion that we support, or that we approve the Mashpee-Falmouth corporate gymnastics.
I second that.
Any discussion? A roll call, Philson.
Aye.
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 Aye. It's approved, Matt, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And family ID?
Yeah, one other, which I had on, family ID, which I gave you two handouts on. Family ID is a company that has been in Massachusetts now for about three or four years, and has a terrific following in eastern Massachusetts. It's used by smaller schools and larger schools. The idea of family ID, it's, you can kind of read through there, it's a registration, it's basically an online registration of all your kids, and in this case it'd be for athletics. Other schools have used it to register kids for school, to register kids for any sort of handbook, receipt, et cetera. What we would be looking to do is use it for athletics to kind of clean up all the paper that we use, and it's a lot, and have all families register their children through family ID, which would encompass them taking the lease claims form, concussion form, really a receipt for athletic handbook that we never get anyways. And I think would tie the parents into really, you know, to being involved in this process. It becomes very hectic in terms of the paper. For me personally, my concern is the liability issue when you don't have that paper. If you don't receive the paper, and a kid's on the field gets hurt, you don't have a liability waiver to file. It's problematic. The same thing with the health issue, with the medical and health issues. What family ID does is, you can kind of see through that packet, it's a drop-down menu, it's a punch-and-click menu, and you put everything you need for your athletic program right on there, and parents are well aware of everything that they need to sign off on right online. And the nice thing it does is that it's easy to register, it's easy for parents to use, and for, from our end, it's easy for myself to make sure that everybody's clear, to make sure coaches have all their kids cleared. For the nurse, it's easy to find the medical information, because parents can put all the medical information on there as well. And then, as you can read there, a lot of it, you're going to have roster, emergency contacts, health reports, that take, you know, ten, five, ten seconds to print out. Coaches will have all that information in case there's ever a kid that hasn't that BP pen, that you're not sure of, you'll have that sheet. This makes it a condenser at all, and it's forms that are easily transportable for us, transportable from person to person, and for them on away games or any home game. Makes it a lot easier on our trainer, myself, and the nurse, and really for families, too, that they're not just getting inundated with paper, and the paper doesn't come back. It cleans up a lot of things, and for me, the piece that's really important is the liability piece. We're covered completely through the system, in my opinion, and I think it's time-consuming enough, this kills a lot of that time. There's a ton of schools that are using this right now, Nextdoor, Marshall uses this, Cape Tech uses this, Eastbridge won our league, you go on and on, all their schools are online. But it's an effective way to get parents involved in the process, registering their kids, and being on top of everything. There are potential issues, I think I talked to Mrs. Bradshaw about that, one of the potential issues is HIPAA. But you can limit who sees this information, particularly the medical information. So, the HIPAA information, around the, around the spread of their schools, you know, you can limit who sees that information. So, we would limit that to sort of personnel and staff in our building. But again, the idea of coverage, I think, is the big thing here, and the thing's really a bore to us. The prohibitive thing, there is a cost on this. The cost is 1295, $1,295 for 512 registrations. Every time a kid registers, that is considered a registration for us, because we have, we should cover middle school as well as high school, we're looking at anywhere between 650 to 800 registrations. And that's again, this would be eight hundred sheets of paper that we have to account for. Nurse would study online, and it's like anything else, it's cleaning up the paper trail.
Where would this come from, the budget?
This would come from the athletic budget. Preferably, you know, it would become part of the line item every year. If not, I would have to look at, you know, funding this through revolving. It's something I would, if I had the money to revolve in, you know, I'd have to see it at the end of the year. But I would do it, I think it's worth it even to come out of revolving, which is usually used more for uniforms or other items that go, are direct benefits to kids, but I think it's worth it in terms of a whole look at our athletic department.
I assume this is going to be saving time for the employees who are shoplifting right now?
Sure. I mean, if you did an analysis and you did man-hours, the number of man-hours, it adds up. This cuts those by seventy-five, eighty percent. Puts the onus really on the parents to get everything in, to go online. Are there going to be people that don't have access to computers, apps? Will those people still do it via pen and paper?
Sure.
And then I would register them, or their coach could register them with that information, probably myself, if I had to do it.
Is there a time where, within this program, that you're required to delete personal information, or when a student graduates, yes?
Right. And that, because they're contacted, because they have a pretty good system where you can contact them, and they're pretty good about it, you can actually delete any information... can actually delete any information you want. Um, I could delete that information, or I could have them batch delete that by year, so if you have kids that graduated, you could just wipe that information out, so that information's not out there.
Thank you. Anybody else? What, any motions?
I'll move that, um, that Mashpee joins this, uh, family ID program.
I second that.
Any discussion? Roll call for those, well, done.
Do you have a draft of the contract?
I do have a draft of the contract, I could send that to you. Um, I don't, I don't, I don't have that with me, but I could definitely send that to you.
Any further discussion? Okay. Um, could you, uh, forward that to myself, or to one of the members, and then we could forward it to the other?
Sure.
And then, uh, is that, does that hold you up, um, on your timeline?
Not tremendously, I, I, I would look to try to get this in at Sports Awards, um, in early June, and, and, um, kind of get parents, the big thing is just to get parents used to doing this, that's the big thing, to move it away from this, a pen and paper, doing it online, uh, that would be the start, and then I could, yeah, we could reverse call and make sure people are aware.
I think we could make a vote by the twenty-second, maybe, it's like two days or...
No, that would, that would...
Okay, I think we can do that. Uh, the motion was, uh, to approve.
Yeah, always tried.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, man.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Next on the agenda, it leaves Mike Richardson and a report from the selectmen. Oh, I do have a, I skipped one there. Uh, we, number, uh, six, for the administrators, and, um, whoever would like to approach first, and the rest of the committee.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I don't know if you want some highlights from the report board, just to go over handbook changes?
We can, um, we can go, go type in a report maybe?
Okay, we'll do a little bit of both. Um, I just want to first point out and actually, um, you know, express my gratitude to Diane Freitas, she was a fifth grade teacher with Mashpee Public Schools, and she was with us since nineteen eighty-seven, and due to the timing of her birthday over the April break, she did make the option to retire, so, um, we miss her, and we wish her a happy and healthy and long, um, many years of active retirement. And we had our spelling bee, which we have not had in our building for many years, and so for two thousand thirteen, uh, we actually had sixty-two participants, which was a little, um, challenging to figure out how to go through different rounds, but in the end, our first-place winner was fifth grader Jordan Hugh, our second-place winner was a sixth grader, Madison Egan, and our third-place winner was a third grader, Peter DiFrancesco, and that was a pretty fun event, and we look forward to next year. Uh, for May, I just want to point out that, um, we have our transition activities from second to third, so there are activities going on where I visit the Coombe School, the second graders visit us, and we have a parent event, and then, um, we have Career Day at Mash, at Quashan School, which is on May thirtieth, so anyone out there listening who has not connected with us and would like to be partic, to participate, we'd love to have you, as well as the members of the school committee, make sure if you'd like to come. Uh, also transitioning sixth to seventh, most of those activities this year are in June, except for Mrs. Arnold's visit, which is May thirty-first, um, for our sixth graders. And we've started some of our court field trips, which is a sixth-grade annual activity, it's a very good learning field trip, and also the one-room schoolhouse field trips have started, which, um, is, um, a very nice event for our third graders. And handbook changes, this is the, the least number of changes I think I've had in, in quite a few years, so I don't know if you have any questions, a lot of them, a lot of the changes were just, um, tightening things up or changing the wording, um, I don't know if you reviewed it at all, if you had any specific questions, um, the, the, the very bottom, those two paragraphs that are part of the wellness policy, I think came out of Health Advisory, and, um, those are probably the same in everybody's book, but there's nothing, um, significant compared to other years when we've made more changes. Any questions? Okay, now?
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi. I brought my assistant principal with me, he's in charge of the handbook committee, so he'll be dealing with that portion. Uh, a couple of things just to let you know about, uh, we are knee-deep in our AP exams, uh, they will finish up next week, uh, and it is a huge undertaking as far as organization goes, and Mr. Rumberger has been in charge of that, so I thank him for that because I used to do it, and I know exactly how difficult it is, so that's great. Uh, senior project presentations are ongoing for the next couple of weeks, um, I know I've seen a couple of you throughout the building to sit on the panels, and I hope that all of you will be there at some point because these kids are doing tremendous work. We want to thank the boosters, especially, uh, Terry Von Hock and Diane Cook for putting on another successful post-prom party after our wonderful prom at the Seacrest last week. Uh, they do such great work, and our kids have such a good time, and it's amazing how the community donates to that, it's really great. Uh, kudos all over the place here, uh, two juniors, Alyssa Farren, oh, sorry, Alyssa Farren who's a junior, and sophomore Stephen Ross, both members, um, of our, uh, Student Council here have been elected to two very prestigious and influential positions on the state council. Stephen was elected as a recorder to the state, um, Student Council meeting, and he'll be responsible for recording minutes of each meeting and delegating this information to the regional student advisory councils across the state. And Alyssa was elected as a delegate to the SSAC with voting rights to any decisions regarding student interests and concerns, um, and these are ultimately presented to the Massachusetts DESE, so these two kids were floating on air after these elections, and they just came in beaming, they were so excited, and I know they'll make us proud, they already do. Uh, we have three young women who have been selected to receive the Junior Women Leaders in STEM Award, uh, Shannon Ahern, Anna Kabeek, and Sophia Hall are at their awards dinner as we speak, over at Mass Maritime Academy. Um, all three of these young ladies are taking at least two science courses, in one case three science courses, including an AP course, um, and all of these courses are at least at the honors level, and they're all taking honors level pre-calculus as well. So, um, it's great that they have this opportunity to be recognized as young women scientists, and to move on from there. They also get a Nifty Scholarship to the Mass Maritime Sea Science and Leadership Program, so it's great for them. Uh, Senior Aaron Higgins has achieved the rank of Eagle Scout in his Boy Scout Troop Thirty-Six, uh, he built a great shed for, uh, the Wacoit Congregational Church, which he did in December, and erected it in December when it was so cold, um, but he raised all the money himself and had a lot of help building that, and he did a wonderful job. Uh, Mashpee High School, because of the work that the whole staff has done over a number of years, has been selected to two (beep) outstanding American high schools. Two weeks ago, we were let know that we were on the Washington Post's list of America's Challenge High Schools, this is the third year in a row we've been on that list, and we, we are moving up the ranks there. Uh, four years ago, we didn't even qualify, so we're, we're in the right direction there. And today, or the other day, I learned that we were selected to the Newsweek list of America's Best High Schools, too. Um, the data is crunched from AP scores and AP enrollments and SAT scores and graduation rates and all of that, and because of the work that everybody does to keep our kids engaged, involved in school, and taking those challenging courses, we're able to appear on these lists, so we're very, very pleased. I'm hogging the microphone, I'll turn it over to Tim.
It's fine, it's great to hear about the accomplishments of our students in our schools, so, thank you, Jane, and thank you, members of the school committee, for the opportunity to present our proposed handbook changes to, uh, to you. Uh, the one that did not make the packet, I would like to highlight, uh, the one that unfortunately was not able to get to you, and that comes from the nurse's office, the nurse has requested that we change vision and hearing screenings for students to grade eleven from grade ten. Uh, the reason is that, um, students of grade ten are already called out of class for their body mass index, uh, examinations, test, testing, and also they have MCAS, so due to lost instructional time, that grade level nurse would ask that we do the, um, vision and hearing screenings following here, which also is good for, uh, when they're preparing to go to college, that, that's already done. So those, that is one, again, that did not make the packet. Uh, the changes that involve procedural matters, uh, there are two, and one is about, um, the use of electronics, and it reads as follows, at the discretion of the administration, students may be allowed to use electronic devices, iPods, MP3 players, et cetera, and earbuds to listen to music at a reasonable volume during lunch, privileges being extended, extended on a trial basis, and may be revoked if abused. Second one is with respect to student parking, uh, the cost of parking is fifty dollars per year, and the new part is the proposal that students who are honor roll at the time of their application will receive a fifty percent discount. Students not on honor roll by the time of application, uh, who ma, that, who make honor roll for the first quarter and remain honored for two consecutive terms, would have half their part of your fee refunding. We think it's important to reward achievement, and, uh, this is a, uh, financial way to do so for our students. Are there any questions?
I did have one on page, uh, page twenty-six, near the bottom of the, um, of this page, uh, do you know how many bears in the high school?
Uh, we have Cape Cod bear last year, but I think that's, uh, the only one that's come close.
Uh, congratulations on the senior seminar, I've been judging, and I think they're just terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, Mashpee Middle School would like to just remind everybody and thank all of the teachers and staff, because this is National Teacher Appreciation Week, all of the schools are recognizing how dedicated our teachers and staff members are, and that they are truly appreciated, even though we don't get the chance to say it each and every day, they are highly valued in the Mashpee system. Mashpee Middle School concluded MCAS testing today, or math and science, you be, it's done, the kids are relieved, the teachers are relieved, and now we just have a couple students to do makeup, and we're shipping that out. National Junior Honor Society Spring Induction of our seventh graders will be on May thirteenth, the school committee is, of course, invited, you'll have invitations, I don't know if you've received them yet, and we will be inducting forty-nine students. These students have attained a GPA of eighty-eight or higher, and have proven community service, leadership, character, and, character, scholarship. So we're looking forward to that, that'll be at twelve-thirty here in the auditorium on May thirteenth, so if you could join us, that would be great. Community service is very big at the Mashpee Middle School, we just concluded last week doing a road cleanup, where I loaded fifteen students into a van, and we went over and helped Catherine Moran and the DPW play one of, uh, Mercantile Way, in advance of a road race that was held this past weekend, we found tires, and TVs, and tables, and I'm sure Mr. Richardson, our selectman, would be very happy to know that a couple more of our streets in Mashpee are very clean right now, Mike, I'm just excited. And we did, we were informed that we were awarded the Belzakian Foundation Summer Math and Science Grant for ten thousand dollars for our second year, we're very excited about that.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And my handbook changes, what I did not write, and I think is implied by all schools, is if there are any legislative or policy changes that apply to the federal or state regulations, those will automatically be updated, as will the names of superintendent, school committee members, all of those changes will automatically be updated. The one change that we have is part of our technology policy under use of library, the hours have changed slightly, and the very last line, food and beverages are now permitted in the library or library computer, that is very important. That's all. Any questions?
Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you.
Uh, we do have to approve these, or we don't have to approve them necessarily, but, uh, when we make things a little expedient, but after we get, uh, there might be a, a motion that the member might want to make to bundle them over intentionally?
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank Wendy Lithwin, the assistant principal, for running our math night earlier this, uh, in April, and the staff that helped that, it was, it's nice to celebrate academics and have fun with it. Um, and Lindsay Sharman, who was our new music teacher this year, uh, brought second-grade students over to the senior center to sing, and it was very well received, um, and we'll do that again right before Flag, Flag Day, to do the patriotic songs, and the senior, um, group, who is also a chorus, is going to join us, so Lindsay's very excited about that, the children performed beautifully, they represented the school really nicely, so that was a thrill. Um, and we're doing a, a food pantry drive, Margie Mitchell is running that, so it's a nice service opportunity. This month is a transition month, as Patty talked about, we're transitioning our second grades to our third grade, and we're welcoming incoming kindergarten children, and as you can see, the month is packed with registration and screenings and countdown events that help accommodate the new families and children to, um, a big school, and, uh, the first year of very wonderful academic experience in Mashpee. Those transitional activities are very, very important, and not all districts are able to do them, and they alleviate a lot of stress, we can answer a lot of questions, we can transition slowly, we can have children in for experiences in the classrooms, um, the last event we did was pack your own snacks, and the children came in, went through the lunch line, and learned to, you know, go through the lunch line and take their choices, put them on a tray, I, I know it's simple, but it's a big deal when they haven't done it before, um, read the story, it, it's, it was, we were really impressed with the children and their families, the opportunity for, um, families to interact a little bit, and the children are counting the days till they ride the bus and come to kindergarten, so it, it's really a special time for us. Um, our changes were quite minimal this year, quite minimal, we want to encourage, um, families to come into the school when their child is late, often they're running late and they're doing the quick drop-off, but when they're not coming on in the building, when, um, it's supervised by staff, we'd like the parents to make sure that they bring their students in. The other two changes, um, reflect really the changes we've made in security, where we don't have to shut the door, lock the door, it should already be shut and locked, so we're just confirming that they, they're secure. Um, I think the last one was quite minimal as well, um, we've changed our drop-off a little bit, previously, people would escort their child, get them out of the, the car, now we have it set up so that the child can either hop out, or we can assist them coming out, um, I can, anyway, uh, so that's running fairly smoothly, when parents get out and do it themselves, it holds up the line, but of course, we understand if parents need to do that, we're just encouraging that kind of quick drop-off, so they're ready for class. That's, those are our only changes this year. And I just wanted to also let you know, last night at ten o'clock on PBS, it was a wonderful program, it was Ted Talks and Education, and they'll be rerunning that, um, it was outstanding, if you're not trying to watch it, or anyone out there does, uh, it gives us some nice conversations to start. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, the team, are there any motions to approve said, uh, handbook changes?
I think a motion that we approved the handbook changes that have been recommended by our administrators.
Okay, second.
I believe it to be, uh, the fellows that make the motion to accept the handbook negotiating now, changes for the Coombe School, the Quashan School, the middle school, the Amish, any further discussion? And, uh, roll call please, Kelly.
Aye.
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 Aye. Now, the next item on the, the agenda, uh, Tribal Education Department, and, uh, we'll, we don't have an interim, so we will move on to a report from the, the, uh, to the school committee, from the Board of Selectmen, Chairman Richardson, please.
First of all, there's a lot going on in town, but I have to say that, uh, it's hardly a comparison to what you guys are all doing for your kids, so, uh, it's amazing, with the leadership and the direction, so, that's great. Annual meeting was a success, we had a grand total of a hundred and fifty-five people show up, I guess everybody's busy, but, uh, the budget went through, and so we're off and running for the year, and hopefully we'll be able to get everything that we want to get done, done, uh, that's, that's kind of the good news. We, uh, for those of you that are interested, the chamber... And we don't have an interim, so we will move on to a report from the Aesop to the school committee from the board of selectmen. Chairman Richardson, please.
First of all, there's a lot going on in town, but I have to say that it's hardly a comparison to what you guys are all doing for your kids. So it's amazing, both the leadership and the direction. So that's great. Annual meeting was a success. We had a grand total of one hundred and fifty-five people show up. I guess everybody's busy. But the budget went through, and so we're off and running for the year. Hopefully, we'll be able to get everything that we want to get done, done. That's kind of the good news. We, for those of you that are interested, the chamber dinner is next week, where we're going to announce some of the winners of the Citizen of the Year and a few other things like that. It's always a nice event, and it shows an opportunity for all of us in town to participate in and celebrating each other's success. We have continued to do work with our volunteers. We're beginning to pick up a lot of people who are showing interest in becoming members of the committees in town, whereas we went with a pretty good gap for a while. We're starting to get some people that are interested. We've done some broadcasting. We've done some PR work on it. Next week, there's a volunteer brunch at the library. There's also a volunteer lunch at the senior center to celebrate all those people in town and take the time out of their lives to help out. And you know, any organization is only successful by virtue of the number of people who support it. And we have a lot of people in Mashpee that really get involved, and that's wonderful. The recreation department's geared up for a good season. We haven't had the weather break yet, but it's on its way. And we've got a lot of good programs to keep our children busy and out of trouble. It's very important that we all participate to the degree that we can. The road work is going on on Grape Neck Road, and we can't help but do work whenever we have the money and whenever we have the time. We have short seasons, so just caution all your kids and parents to be a little careful on the road. It's kind of tough out there right now. But once we're all said and done, we're protecting people that come from down by the Town Hall all the way up to the Mashpee Commonwealth area by putting this new road walk. So that's good use of our money. Human Services next week will present the results of their consultant work on what we can do to better improve what we do for our residents. Human Services is a small operation. They use an awful lot of outside vendors to try to give people help when they need it. We're going to do a little bit more effort on trying to broadcast to all the residents who are in need of help, that there's a place to go to get it. We're improving the relationship between the Human Services and the town, as well as the communications process. Boys and girls come, had a radio meeting a couple of weeks ago. Again, they take care of about a thousand kids on a daily basis, and they do a wonderful job. It's a very difficult thing to manage chaos, which is pretty much what it is on a daily basis over there. But when you think about a thousand kids looking for a place to go, it's safe, it's secure, it's keeping them off the streets, and it's keeping them occupied with things to do. To put it honestly, we just finished a project on John Spahn, trying to help clean up some of our areas. For some reason, and I don't think Mashpee's alone, trash seems to be one of the most popular things people do. They're continually dumping things. On the eighteenth of this month, through Chamber Commerce, they're having a cleanup on several of the streets in Mashpee, Donnas Lane being one of them, which is loaded with trash. So drop a dime whenever you see something, call the DPW, call the Town Hall, let us know where the areas are where there's an awful lot of things going on, and we'll see if we can refocus our efforts to try to clean up Mashpee. I've been talking to the chamber in town about trying to have one cleanup day where everybody in town just picks up trash and we deposit it in one place, and we start going from that day forward. Big Fix is a big thing happening in the fall. It's not too soon to talk about it. It's an organization that takes a town every year, and they select, actually, they have applications to people who are in need of help. They can't do things around their home because of a medical situation or an inability to do things. The application process is better. There's a ton of privacy involved, and we use residents of Mashpee, and we're looking for some hundred-plus people to spend a day breaking, cleaning, doing some carpentry work, whatever it is that we can, along with some contracts, just to help us on one day. So one day of helping people in Mashpee is a very good opportunity for everybody to get involved. So there's a lot of good things going on, and I'm happy to say I'm part of it. Last but not least, I want to end by saying I am very much impressed with all the things that are going on in the schools, and I think our administrators, your administrators, that work with you guys are doing a wonderful job. Unless you have any questions, I am done.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment. I don't believe we have anything. Next on the agenda is acknowledgements. The first one we have is addressed to Bill McNamara, authored by Jane Day, thanking Bush's Club, and particularly the post-prom committee for supporting the high school students with a prom party, post-prom party this year. I'm sure they're actually working on the post-prom party for next year, or soon will be. So it's a lot of work, and we appreciate the Bush's Club immensely, and the post-prom committee could not happen without them. And I actually participated in that, I think, at home until three-thirty in the morning one time. So it's a point of adventure, and quite a tight commitment for all those adults. Next one I have is, looks like, seems to appear that there was a second grader in the Coombe School that raised a dollar for every student that would wear a sports shirt to school. And this fundraiser was held in the Quastler School and the Coombe School. All this was run by a second grader, and they raised, she raised fifteen hundred dollars for the Hands for the Fund. So certainly a hard worker.
That's amazing.
That is amazing. The final one we have is addressed to Suzanne F. Just from the Massachusetts Maritime Academy, the assistant director of admissions, asking to join the work recipients for the 2013 Junior Women Leaders in STEM. This will be held on the eighth from five to nine, and at the Blinn Hall. I believe that's on campus there. And so we have for now. And acknowledgements. And the next item on the agenda would be approval of minutes for April tenth, two thirty, twenty thirteen, and entertain a motion.
I move to approve the minutes for April tenth, twenty thirteen.
You'll second?
I second that.
And discussion? We have a roll call for Phyllis?
Aye.
Aye.
Stay. Upstate.
Aye. Three to, pass for three votes. And the next item on the agenda is vote on contract for new superintendent. However, that's going to be tabled in particular. Item, and I do have a statement to make. The school committee does have a statement to make regarding the superintendent's search process. The committee has decided not to pursue further contract negotiations with Dr. Hershey. At this time, I would, I would assume that the committee would want to find an avenue to find a superintendent and possibly nominate the superintendent and possibly contract with a superintendent. So I open the floor to any motions to add in the items.
I'll make a motion that we add an item to the agenda in regard to discussion on path forward in regard to superintendent.
Do you want to second?
Second.
Second by David. And do we have any discussion, or do we have a roll call? You need a roll call, Phyllis?
Aye.
Aye.
I need an answer to add the item of discussing our future endeavors with regards to finding a superintendent. Does anyone have a motion in that regard, or any discussion there?
Well, we're here again. I guess we have several options that we can do. We can go to the candidates who are remaining from our original search, or we can go with an entry. And I think we need to discuss some options on that.
That's correct. We could hire an intern. We could hire a remaining finalist. We could hire anyone with a certification or licensure in the state, for the state of Massachusetts, or we could begin the search. So it's the committee's discretion.
Well, speaking as one of the members who was on the search committee, it was a long process. It involved a lot of people in the community. They were very dedicated for all of the resumes that they read. They were very open about their opinions in the sessions that we held about their, how they felt about the candidates. I think they did an excellent job. It was a very large time commitment, and I know that every candidate that they put forward was worthy of consideration by this committee. I don't see any reason not, at this point, to consider those candidates that were vetted by that committee.
Could we contact the ones to find out their availability? I think that would be a logical move. And when the search committee evaluated the candidates, did you kind of grade them from the ones you selected on down? Did you have like a first group, second group, third group?
There was a kind of a system where we looked at the criteria that the school committee had set up, and those that met the most items in that criteria were held at the highest level for our consideration.
Maybe you have any of these looking to distribute those around the whole school committee, so that we could all review, say that the top six candidates excluding the ones that we've already gone?
I don't know if that's quite necessary at this point.
I think it's necessary to move on. I think we spent a lot of time on this. We were doing that in January. It's now May eighth. We should move on.
The alternative would be to hire an interim superintendent, like for a one-year contract?
But the purpose of that would be to conduct another search, starting from scratch.
Not necessarily from scratch. We have a lot of candidates with already evaluation, right? So we could use, we could use our evaluations that we have, and then still have an interim superintendent in place while we make another evaluation.
I mean, what allows to look at potential candidates who didn't apply the first time that might be in a different situation, might potentially be a better fit after you go the interim. My concern would be, here we are in the early part of May, and most of the candidates that are out there that were looking to make a change, that are currently a superintendent, I would, maybe they're already wrapped up in their situation. I don't know if we end up with a diminished pool of candidates. Or is it maybe an interim selection, or interim, or out, it's an opportunity to see who else is out there? And also consult potential as well, the possibilities.
Well, I'm comfortable with the candidates that we have selected, that we interviewed back in March at this point. I think they were qualified. They went through the whole process. It wasn't easy for any of them to be selected as a finalist. And I think they're worthy of consideration at this point.
Well, the chair will entertain any motions for any moves they want to make?
I move to hire Brian Hyde as Mashpee Superintendent of Schools. My second motion.
We have a motion to second to hire Brian Hyde as Superintendent of Mashpee Public Schools. Any comment, discussion?
Well, I would like to see Mr. Hyde advanced to the position of superintendent, specifically because of his knowledge of the school, his knowledge of the town. I think it brings him down just as unequal by any other candidate that we had during the search.
I disagree, and I think that if you offered Mr. Hyde the superintendentship, I think that it should be for no more than one year as an interim position. And I, that lines with kind of my thoughts, you know, given his lack of practical experience as a superintendent. It is quite a leap. Do I think he could probably make it? Yes. But it gives an opportunity for him to prove himself, and also gives an opportunity for the school committee to see how he performs in that role and see if it is a good fit.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Did anyone second it?
Is there any further discussion?
Well, I'm not in favor of the one-year super, interim position, because the evaluation tool, I think we will be able to keep on top of the performance of any superintendent that we hire. And the, I'm just uncomfortable with having somebody that's local. I think, I hear the rationale behind it, but I would still like to go with a three-year contract, because I'm confident that he can do the job.
And I guess my point would be, Phyllis, if it works out, there's no reason you can't extend it.
That's right.
And if it doesn't work out, we try.
That's right.
This is interesting, having considered that position. Different work. Should I just restate my motion?
You can change your motion.
Sure.
One time?
I move to hire Brian Hyde as Mashpee Superintendent of Schools for three years.
How was that difficult at first? Three years?
She's had it done like eight times.
Okay, I second that.
This is a motion by Donal to hire Brian Hyde, or to nominate Brian Hyde as superintendent of schools for a three-year term. Is there any discussion?
I still think, as I previously stated, that three years is too long for someone who hasn't had that role in the past in any other public school system. While I think he potentially can do it, I feel much more comfortable with a one-year interim situation with an option for us to extend it into a more permanent role based upon his performance and how he does in that situation. I think, once again, that is probably a low risk for both us and a high opportunity for Mr. Hyde.
Going through the process of a search committee and the, this whole thing of hiring a superintendent, I disagree. I think he can do a good job. I think he can do three years.
Well, okay, I can, I want to kind of entertain the interim only because it's likely that most of the people on this board will be here next year at this time, when it comes up for invoke. I want to see him get a chance to do the job.
Intro role would allow him the opportunity to prove himself.
That's right.
It's been a long time since Mashpee's had an interim superintendent.
And it is, we are taking a risk.
And I think it's a prudent way to go.
And we have to go through the hiring process again, and I don't agree with that.
I don't think we have to go through that.
No, I don't think.
We wouldn't necessarily have to go through that. That's a, you know, the world of board. The board would decide at that time.
Yeah.
They could, you know, they could, potentially, they could, the board could hire Brian as an interim, and say six months later hire him for three years. You know, for example, in January, the committee could say, we're going to extend it to three years, or they could say, you know, at the, at the, at the end of the school year, you know. So anytime, the school committee can exercise its role.
I think it is, it's an interesting situation, because interims, sometimes they're coming in from the outside, sometimes it's an interim, something like that. And I don't know how it usually runs at an interim. This is like a This is like a trial run, where in interims usually they get in place just because they know they're there. Wow, another entire search is going on.
And in this particular case, that's not the situation. We're giving, we're allowing someone the opportunity to prove themselves, demonstrate that they can do the job. And based on their performance, you know, we will make a determination whether or not he's the right person, or if we need to, you know, go back and look again.
I think clearly if he became a finalist, he's capable of doing this job.
We were looking for a three-year superintendent, or we were looking at this job, and when we...
The situation is different, though.
The what?
The situation now is different. Because we had selected Dr. Hershey, and the board has decided not to proceed. So the school committee is in a different situation. Mr. Hyde doesn't really have the experience. He'd never been hired than an assistant superintendent, assistant principal. And we don't really know how well he's going to perform. So taking a one-year approach seems to be that would be a prudent approach.
I mean, he may not accept a three-year role.
That's right.
I mean, that would be his option.
And that is a tough position to put anybody in. Again, it is, I'll say that it can't be done. Anybody who accepts a position as an interim knows exactly what they're coming into, I think. It's a different set of evaluations where somebody who was hired for three years has a long-term view. So you're basically saying combine the two roles almost, start with a small step and then go for the larger step.
And hopefully both his performance and our faith in him will be rewarded.
This is a unique search, not so much the search but the results, because I know that he has less experience in central office than any other candidate that we saw. There's no doubt about it.
I want to make sure the committee has plenty of time to discuss, so if there's any kind of discussion, there is a motion on the floor.
And an interim? I mean, how much duty does this committee expect an interim to accomplish during one year?
Well, there are some occasions where, we do have evaluation tools, as the teachers do for a super-tenant. And sometimes there are occasions where the interim will not even be, or the committee will decide not to even have a evaluation. So that, you know, I would assume that the committee would, if they did hire Mr. Hyde in a one-year interim, I would hope that the committee would go forward with having a full evaluation tool so that we can set the SMART goals and we can have, each member would have written responses to each individual goal that we set. And I would at least hope that the committee would do that.
Firstly, I wouldn't treat it any different. My expectations would be the same for a finalist or a long-term, only it's a different timeframe over which their plans would be.
I disagree. I really don't think an interim is the same thing. I think if you hires, you know, Mashpee needs a leader, and he needs to know Hershey that they have at least a good three years, and we've gone over a lot of the contract stipulations, and they basically, you know, that three years is basically what a lot of people get. Again, I will rephrase that he was a finalist. I think he is qualified, and I think when you get into interims, you know, it's just not the same, even in the way that they would perform their duties, because they would be wondering, will I be hired again for another two years instead of doing their job?
I just do the best job he can.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that give you more motivation?
No, I stand my ground.
I don't understand that. I think it's time to bring to a vote this.
The question on the floor is to nominate Brian Hyde as Superintendent of Mashpee Public Schools. Does anyone understand the question? I will call on Phyllis.
For three years?
For a three-year term. That's correct.
One thing we should vote on, whether or not to hire him at all, and then hire him, and then fill out the term.
Well, they'll be up to John to amend or strike here.
Would you consider doing that?
No, I'm just going to leave the motion as it's...
Well, I make the motion that we amend. Can we do that?
I have to go now, please.
The motion is... The motion is three-year term for Brian Hyde nomination, three-year term for Brian Hyde. Does anyone understand the question? And unless there's more discussion?
I don't know.
No for Phyllis and John?
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes. And that is, you could ask the committee to reconsider if they like. But that wouldn't be a motion you would have to make. Right now, we have three to two to reject the three-year term for Brian Hyde. Are there any other further motions?
I moved that we hire Brian Hyde as our Mashpee Superintendent for the interim of one year with the consideration at the end of that term, should have considered him for a three-year position.
So I...
Based on your contract.
If I understand, it's not necessarily a one-year contract. Do we need to have a provision for it on that, do you think?
I don't know.
No.
A one-year contract?
No, I mean, we would normally be reconsidering at the end of the one-year term anyway.
Yeah, so I believe, I don't believe that we call it a term, we would just call it a one-year.
A one-year contract.
What kind?
A one-year contract.
Phyllis Brown has nominated Brian Hyde for a one-year contract. Am I correct?
I'll second that.
Don Myers has seconded. Any discussion on the subject? Motion on the floor?
Okay, so we have a contract proposal for one year. This gives us an interim possibility to reevaluate because of the extraordinary circumstances and differences of experience levels for this form candidate. Gives you a chance to come in, do the job, and the school committee can then reevaluate at a certain date. Do we have a date of evaluation? Because it shouldn't be...
Typically done around May, like I said. Usually turn them in early May if you have a big one.
I think that should be covered in the contract.
Yeah, it should, and I'm kind of uncomfortable with that because...
You can set it anytime you want. We can have any timeframe you wish. We can end at April one, we can end at April thirty, however you like. But we'll discuss that at a later time.
I'm confused. Is there a motion on...
The motion on the floor is, the motion on the floor is a one-year term nomination for Brian Hyde. Am I correct? Yes.
So what is the downside of this versus a three-year at this point? What are the downsides to this?
I just don't think anyone can really perform. I mean, I think you need a three-year contract to make a difference.
I believe it's extendable at any time, you know. You can extend it August first, June, October, you know. So you can tear it up and start new. I believe this is probably, now you might want to wait ninety days, but, you know, if the committee felt strong enough, then I think that at any time, they could...
No, contract is a contract.
How about a two-plus-one?
Well, we still have Phyllis's motion.
Well, I'm concerned that the superintendent really sets the term, not just for one year, for several years out. And because the timeframe on giving the evaluation would be so short, it wouldn't even cover the whole school year, because you really have to have the evaluation done on April first.
That's exactly. We would have to probably discuss the evaluation and the process, day one, with any superintendent started anyway. I think the first meeting we have, probably we would have to have that agenda, discuss that in one step, the process right away, and start to gather evidence of a superintendent. Maybe it begins gathering evidence. So I think there would be enough time, there would be at least ten, ten months or that range where we could evaluate.
I think it gives an individual enough time to outline their plans for the future, start, coming up with the hard things that they're looking for, you know, gives them an opportunity to expand on their vision of the school, and us an opportunity to see whether or not that's what we agree with. I personally don't see any downside to this.
I don't see downside.
Well, I know there's a possibility they consider a role, and I'm just not convinced that there's enough upside to this, or the consideration to go back to the original motion for three years. I have my disrespect for Mr. Hyde. I'm just, personalities involved, I would hope that all the teachers and administrators would support Mr. Hyde. It's not easy having somebody coming in for just one year. There can be a lot of personality conflicts, I'm predicting.
That may be true, but that's why you want to happen for one year. See if you have a good administrator. If you can garner the cooperation of all the other administrators, it protects the school district and that standpoint.
Any further discussion?
This is tough because you can't say really much of anything, can you?
I guess I could, but, you know.
Say it.
I, I think, I have already voted for Brian twice, so, and just a few minutes ago, to offer a three-year contract, and I think that, I think it's very tough for someone to ask to perform in one year. But if anyone would work hard enough to do it, I think it would be Brian Hyde. And I don't know that Brian would accept it, accept the offer, I don't know that, but I'm obviously, I've put my, put my opinion on this tangibly, you know. I have full faith in Brian Hyde, and if he fails, you know, I will be able to accept that, that I made the wrong decision. However, I'm pretty confident that I think he can do it with twenty-five years' experience in this district. He knows where every screw and nut and bolt and pencil is in this school, and I think that he could have a good working relationship, because I believe he's spent eighteen years on the negotiating team for the Teachers Association. I don't think that anybody, any candidate we could find would know or have a better relationship with the residents of town. There's not going to be a great deal of learning curve at all in terms of knowing how to get around town, who to talk to, and how to talk to them is the most important thing. He knows how to talk to people and how to get things done, and so either way, I think, either way we go with one or three years or whatever, I think, I would be safe to say that Brian Hyde would do a pretty good job. You know, I do, as everybody might know, I do have a child in the school system, so I do have skin in the game, so I trust Brian Hyde.
The thing is, I disagree on one point, and that is that Brian has never been an administrator of administrators. He's never been a supervisor of the school system administrators, and that's, that's a pretty important role.
He was an assistant, interim assistant for one year, but there are reasons why he didn't move on, which I took into consideration. And I also took into consideration his background on his application, working in managerial positions. And I think that's very impressive for a superintendent who, again, is like a CEO of the district. I think he's had plenty of experience dealing with people, and I think he would be a great superintendent for this town. He loves Mashpee, he is Mashpee, he's, he understands the budget, negotiations. I just think he has a lot of qualifications outside of the school system, which I think is different and attractive.
That's a great point, Doc John.
Thank you.
He's been a manager at one of the finest restaurants in this county, or in the state that have had it for over twenty-three years.
Yeah, but the personnel, like, that you manage in a restaurant are quite different than managing teachers and administrators.
How so?
Just the jobs that they do.
Well, so anyone has any further comment? Does anyone understand the question? The question is a one-year nomination by Phyllis Brown for a one-year contract for Brian Hyde.
I'm still considering this. Coming into this, it's not only just managing the personnel, we are undergoing this huge change with Common Core and aligning all the curriculums. This is a massive job, which is including many extra hours for all our administrators, teachers, and professional development, and it's turning the school system, every district in the state, completely upside down. It's just massive. I don't know.
Yeah, and we have a very fine curriculum director, I believe she's in charge, so we do have fine administrators.
I don't envy anyone in this department.
So in the effort to have a meeting or a timely, you know, timely meeting, I'm going to ask the committee for a vote on the question on the floor is a one-year term nomination for a one-year term for Brian Hyde, Superintendent of Schools. And I'm going to roll call.
I do have one year question. If this motion is voted down, will we then go back to the district? Could we go back to considering three-year term?
You could consider one, two, three, you could consider all of the stacks, the year, or any other variation you would like to make. Just the Commonwealth allows us to vote no more than six.
I just remembered something. In our motion, we did say that we were offering a four-year contract.
Yeah.
That's correct.
But the situation has changed, Colin.
Right.
This is a different situation.
Just pointing out, that's what was in the motion.
Why is it a different situation if he's a finalist?
Because we selected someone else first.
I know, but that's not going to happen, so he is the runner-up alternate. What's the problem?
Susan is the runner-up. So the question on the floor by, the motion on the floor by Phyllis is a one-year term, nomination of one-year term for Brian Hyde. Do we have a roll call for Phyllis?
No. No.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. So we have stalemate still. We still do not have a...
No, you do. It's three-three.
Well, yeah, we don't have, but we still don't have a, it's three, we have three no's.
Three.
Three, I thought you said yes. You said yes.
No, he didn't, I don't know. Could you, could you, we can, could you restate the motion again, please, item, please?
The motion was a one-year term.
Yes.
A nomination for a one-year term to Brian Hyde.
That's great.
You said no.
And you said yes.
And then it's, and so did Joan say?
No, because we don't want one year.
And you said yes, and I said yes, and you said no.
So do you want to, did you mean to say yes or no? I mean, did you mean to say no to one year?
No, I meant to say yes to one year.
Okay.
So we were three-two. Three to two is approved, so we have, good thing we have math potions. It's okay. I guess I should call Brian Hyde, see if he'll attend.
Are we allowed to give one year if we advertise multi?
Yes.
I think we are.
We are allowed to do anything. We could consider someone entirely different, so it's just up to the school committee. We could reject all of the other candidates.
Yeah, I think we're...
Take a five-year recess.
Ask the committee for a motion to recess, five minutes.
So...
Sorry.
A little favor.
Aye.
Aye.
So we are coming back to work and I just talked to Mr. Hyde. Hello, I'm, it is kind of small, slight delay. I just got the phone, Mr. Hyde, and he will accept. First, I would like before moving further to make sure there are, I would like to ask the committee if there are reconsiderations before we, before we stand.
Yes. I, I, I would, is this what I can't do? I don't know if it's, if it's, I would like to reconsider and make a motion to at least give him two years. Like it says on the contract, I mean, on the brochure.
The advertised one?
Yes. It's multi-year. I feel very strongly about that. How about two?
We have a reconsideration on the floor. We need a second to discuss that.
Well, I'm seconded just for the purpose of discussion. Again, it's the evaluation over a course of three years. It is a long time to extend to somebody that doesn't have the typical representative superintendent in the district. Although all first-time superintendents have to go through the process where they prove themselves, I understand that.
My concern is that as one year, you know, with one year, I don't know that, you know, practices and policies and initiatives would be implemented fully, you know, in one year. I don't know that, you know, maybe a majority of, or minority, or a small sect might, you know, not comply with a one-year contract and just want to say you're not going to be here next year. I don't really need to listen to you. I mean, I don't know.
I, I do feel...
I think one year is different.
I was trying to express that, I guess the word was leaving something vulnerable.
Yes.
Mainly, I think mainly what you're looking for in a one-year contract is to prevent, is to be able to stop a catastrophe.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
Maybe if it's, if it's not going to work out, you would like to be able to stop it and make sure it's possible.
You can have it from both sides, so.
Yeah. And I look at him, he's growing to do a one-year contract and understands the risks associated with that. Feels it is more than up to him to challenge, that he wants to prove that he can do this. And I find this where we are.
Yeah.
You know, we have the option to change at any point down the road based on what we see.
Am I allowed to make that motion?
Currently, the motion is to reconsider.
Okay.
And to...
Oh, that's right.
And to offer a nomination of two years.
Yes.
That's the current motion on the floor.
So that reconsider to retract the offer that we just made.
Well, I don't use a...
We can reconsider, we have time.
Would you, I think we might have to, we would have, like Donna says, I think you have to strike the previous motion that was passed.
All right, so you would take away the one year. But he's already agreed to the one year.
Wait, come on.
So if your risk is, you have nothing.
I'm sure he'd rather have a two-year. He would have agreed to a two-year too.
I don't have a crystal.
Yeah, that's right. It's a multi-year contract, 145 to 157, advertised that way.
So circumstances have changed.
So any more discussion? The question on the floor is to strike the previous motion of vote that was passed and give a two-year nomination to Brian Hyde.
No, I thought the motion on the floor was to reconsider.
Well, didn't you, didn't you meant it? You meant it to say to strike the previous.
I have to say, restate it. I move to, I, Brian Hyde, as Mashpee Superintendent of Schools for two years.
You'd have to, it'd have to be reconsideration or striking the previous.
We already have a firmly, an offer for one year. So we're retracting that and replacing with two years.
Right.
Is that what you're trying to do?
That's what I'm trying to do.
We have to call Brian Hyde and tell him that we reconsidered.
It's a multi-year contract. It's a multi, it was advertised multi-year. And I don't think the situation's different. He was a finalist and he's a runner-up.
Phyllis did it.
I agree. I seconded the reconsideration, but I thought we had to have a vote to reconsider. Maybe we just, maybe the motion, I seconded it, we discussed it now, do we vote to reconsider?
We're concerned that we can reconsider on its own.
What did she choose? I thought you chose a motion already.
Well, the original motion was one year by Phyllis, that passed.
No, 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 the Joan, Joan already has a motion to reconsider.
Reconsider and give two-year contract.
Yes.
Nomination for two-year contract. Yes.
I'm still comfortable with one year. I don't see additional value added with it and the fact that he's willing to accept the one year.
I'm comfortable with two because we advertised as multi-year. And again, he went through the search, he became a finalist, went through the motions, and he came in second.
That's the same argument you made.
That's my argument.
That's your argument.
And I feel that we should give at least two years. That's my, I mean, that's my belief. That's the way it was advertised.
Let's vote on it, then.
The question on the floor is to reconsider the vote and to retract, refract and reconsider. The vote of one year for Mr. Hyde. And the new motion is to give two-year nomination for Mr. Hyde, the superintendent of schools. And we'll go ahead and roll call for Phyllis.
Who was first? You don't have to be, you can go first if you want.
Yes.
No.
No. So now we have a retraction for my two-year. So...
Hold on, so that was just to retract, you know, Brian Hyde.
I thought it was the vote for two years. That's why we were trying to clarify this at the time.
It was a retraction for the original one-year. And that, a two-year contract. Right. So now we're cracking to square one.
You're going to call again?
Well, we, I think we have to have another...
Do you want to clarify, if he has a motion that we hire Brian Hyde as his superintendent of Mashpee Schools?
That's the thing, I think we should have a separate vote just for the continuity of the office position. That's why I'm concerned about my lady like that, you know.
I have two to...
So I'm intending any procedural, I'll see if we'll, I'm intending those motions.
I move that we hire Brian Hyde as superintendent of Mashpee Schools for the term of two years.
I second that.
Second, right, Joan, and any discussion?
No, I think that two years gives continuity from one year to the next. Somebody coming in to the job can't be looking over their shoulder constantly because we need a leader. And that means you have to look forward. Yes, going to be learning the job. But now we're going to learn the district, there's a trade in there. And I think it's beneficial to have that timeframe that extends out a little bit longer. But it still is less than a three-year contract. And we will know well within that timeframe if we want to continue as promoting with any superintendent. And it does fit within the timeframe that we advertised when we started the search process.
I would obviously prefer a three, but that sounds like a good compromise, Phyllis.
I move the question.
We're going to go ahead and do a roll call. And the question on the floor is nomination for two years for Brian Hyde. Phyllis?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
Aye. I have a motion to recess.
I'm a new chairman of our recess.
Second.
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 One favor.
Aye.
Tell me the order, tell me the order after recess. Apparently Mr. Hyde is watching the television, so he accepts the two years. So we have a nomination and we have a candidate, Brian Hyde, and we've set the terms of two years. Are there any other business that the committee would like to undertake tonight? And I was, I was wondering about the, I was wondering about the contract. People wanted to approve the text of the contract or wait till another time. I think we have to wait because some of the, I think that the length of the contract honestly may be changed. Very good. Report of the superintendent, which we do not have tonight and is predisposed. Some committee reports, update to the bonus, bonus policy is first read, page 30. page thirty-eight. Now, this is just a, um, all this is, is some typographical directions and, um, to add the under Free Kids Act of 2010. And, um, to talk about the laws, nine and, and two, the national laws on July thirtieth, twenty-ten, uh, this basically clerical with, uh, items that had not been covered previously by the bonus committee, uh, Health and Presby committee. And this was, um, came through us, to, through us to, uh, through Warren Paxton, our food services director. And so, this is a band, basically, um, housekeeping issue. And I'll entertain a motion to approve changes to the bonus policy.
Second.
A little favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Um, school committee, school committee policy manual sections A, B, and C. This is the second read and copy of them will, superintendent office for review. That, um, we can have, either have Donna get that or send to an email. But, uh, it's a heavy chunk of reading and I'm still working on it, so I don't know how the problem members are, uh, this, obviously postponed it or however you want to proceed.
I move that we postpone.
Okay, um, I don't think we need a vote on that, but we'll just go ahead and table it to another meeting. Uh, if that's happening, so everyone has the calendars, has the menus in there, packing them up, of course, they can, you know, address the proper person with those questions if they have any, and, uh... So, I have, you know, if anyone has anything else, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A little favor.
Aye.